City Council on Monday, November the 20th, 2017. And let's, those of a like mind, would you please join me in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the true republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. It's okay. I suppose if I put those young people in the back on the spot, someone would give me a bad time about picking on them, so I won't do that tonight. Let's see, announcements, are there any additions to the agenda? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias. Presentations, comments from the public. Oh, let's see, let's do the police cadet thing first and then we'll, we'll get green slips. Oh, Lieutenant Button?
I will turn this over to Sergeant Meeks and Officer Rathalagurche to introduce our new cadets.
Okay. You, you could do it though, right?
If I had to.
Shane, come at, Sergeant Meeks, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So, we'll have the cadets introduce themselves and tell a little bit about themselves, but before that, we just wanted to talk a little bit about the program. I don't know how familiar you are with it, so just to give a pretty brief. So about a year ago, we were at the Police Department, we were talking about what we could do to, to, you know, make things better and to, to, overall, we thought, you know, one of the things we don't have is a, a strong cadet program. It's, it's been years, almost a decade since we had any cadets. And so we wanted to revitalize the program. And we started with, you know, you have to have a policy and we looked at a lot of other programs and I think we, we designed a, a really good program. It was, it was, a lot of thought was, was put into it. And one of the other things that, that really helped is we put in for a grant for the Oregon Community Foundation for a startup, as we're dealing with, with youth and with a careers program. And so we were awarded a, a pretty, a good grant. So, with that, we, we started the program. We've been doing it just under a year now. So it's, it's sort of slower than we wanted to. There's always things that, that take time when you're, when you're starting a new program. But basically, they're, they're here to learn how to be police officers and it's, it's a careers program. So they, they do a ride-alongs, they'll, they'll ride along with us, a certain number of hours, a certain number of hours a month. We have lots of training and, yeah, they're, they're riding along with the training and the regular meetings. So it's, it's gonna, it's a lot of work for them. And then once a year, they have the law enforcement challenge where they get to go and, and practice the, the skills that they learned with, with other cadets. So, that's just a short summary of, of what, what the program is. So, I'd like to give some time to Officer Rathalagurche to talk about what his role in the program is.
Next, there we go.
Thank you, guys. So my name's Brandon Rathalagurche. I've been a police, or a police officer here for about four years. And my career actually started back in 2008 when I wa, when I became a cadet with the city of Salem. Back in 2008, I actually came to the city of Staton and tried to apply to be a cadet, but unfortunately, we didn't have one back then, so I had to go to Salem. The reason, you know, I'm pretty passionate about our cadet program is because it's how I started and it's how it worked for me. You know, really important stuff with the cadets is they're gonna learn a lot of the basic police stuff, they're gonna do ride-alongs, they're gonna get to watch what we do, and they're really gonna build a foundation and love for this job and career, as I did when I was a cadet around that age. And it worked for me, obviously. You know, I, I networked and went to a bunch of cadet events and that's where I met Lieutenant Button, and he recruited me back to the city of Staton where I tried to start eventually. So, you know, looking back from 2008 to now, knowing that a cadet program is how I started my career and it was successful, I'm excited to see that we now have four cadets that are starting their careers and I would love to see them in a few years, you know, fill in my shoes in a full-time spot. So now I will have them come up, they're gonna introduce themselves, just a quick tidbit about them, and then we'll go from there.
Just briefly, Brandon, you forgot to tell them that you really got your start at Budget Line.
Yes, yes. I was actually just telling Sergeant Meeks that I used to work for you.
They work for you? Whoa. Any good stories or video?
So, hi, my name's Claudia Camacho. So first of all, I'm, joined the Staton Police Cadet Program 'cause I'm interested in a law enforcement career. I actually started as a cadet with the Salem Police Department when I was 16. Since they didn't have a cadet program here, I went to go join with them. And I was there for two years and then I found out that they were making a, bringing back their cadet program here. So, I joined here just 'cause I always wanted to be like a cadet in like my actual community instead of being part of like another community, community where I wasn't from. So I joined here and I like it way better here than I did in Salem. And, yes, so when I turn 21, I plan on becoming a reserve officer here and then my dream is to hopefully become a full-time officer here, so hopefully I'll accomplish that goal someday. And then I'm also going to college too, my second year, and I'll be majoring in sociology.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Morgan Smith. I've always wanted to be in law enforcement and I first saw the Staton Cadet Program startup and I thought it was a good way to get my foot in the door to become a full-time in law enforcement.
Hi, my name is Colatia. I decided to join the program because I thought it was a good chance to learn about what a police officer actually does and I didn't know if I wanted to do it yet. And this has kind of shown me what it's like to be an actual police officer and someday I hope to be a game warden, so.
Hello, my name is Jacob Youngworth and I joined because I want to get my foot in the door and I got to know a lot of cool people like Brandon. And so, he'll carry my name out, so I'll be cool. And then, I'm in my first year of Schmecker right now. I'll be going another year and maybe go to like Western Oregon or something and then hopefully be a full-time.
So, as you can see, we have some young folks entering our program and they're as passionate, if not more passionate than we are. So we're just trying to, you know, carry the legacy and train some new guys to take our spots someday. Any questions? All right, you will see them out with us in uniform. Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, young folks and our serving officers and Lieutenant Button for organizing all this.
Actually, most of the credit really goes to Sergeant Meeks and Officer Brandon Rathalagurche. They kind of got the program started from the ground up, writing the policies, applying for the grant, and they've done an excellent job with it. We're really proud of the cadets that are on board and we have high hopes for them.
Okay, good. Thank you again. All right. All right. Under presentation and comments from the public, Jerry Flowers, please. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Jerry Flowers. I'm, I live on 412 Middlebrook, it's here in Staton. I was gonna bring a matter to the city and you guys called your hearing a little before I'm ready to, and I heard about a pond and then I heard about annexation and a flag lot. I've got a piece of property on, over by Golf Lot Road that I'm looking at and I've been doing some due diligence on it for a few months now. And I keep running into stormwater issues. And anyway, then I heard about a pond and so I wanted to know if the pond's gonna be built and where it's gonna be built and is it gonna be designed for future and can it be designed for future? I know there's some, a bunch of hard feelings about all this and I'm kind of over here on the side, I just happen to be looking at this piece of property. And it's in Escrow, I've had it in Escrow for a while now. So, and I've been told and I've looked at a lot of different options and I've been told that it's, that I have to, if I develop the property, I have to go north for the storm drain. And I do development, I got a few developments I've done and I'm right in the middle of them now in Omsville. And we always do developments and we always upsize for future. That's just the name of the game. And I heard about this one and I'm not pro, I'm not con, I'm not either way, I just am asking about a piece of property and I was going to take it to the city, but I thought, I'll come here. So I'm still gonna meet with them and whether I get an answer here or not. So, anyway, some people have a preconceived idea of why I'm here. Not true. 'Cause I just need, I just want an answer. So, anyway.
I could answer that for you, Jerry, if you don't mind.
I'm not.
City Council?
I haven't asked a question yet.
You wanted to know about the storm drainage.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so you've been in my office probably two or three times in the last week and this is the first I heard about it.
Well, you don't normally take a presentation to somebody until you're done with it. I'm not done with it right now.
Okay, I thought you were asking about a specific piece of property.
I get my engineers involved, I get my engineers involved. I, I go through the projects. If you know me or know anything about me, you'll know I do all that ahead of time. Matter of fact, I hire engineers to do that. This hearing is just a little bit before I'm ready. So you guys will be seeing me, whether you want to or not, I don't know. But anyway, I will submit it to the city. So, anyway, I was wondering, or the, is, is anybody gonna be allowed to hook on? Because that's a lo, what is it, 1,000 or 1,200 feet or wherever, it has to go to the north from, across and stuff. I'm not opposed to that. Normally, you share that cost. Normally, everybody gets together that's gonna hook onto it and you share that cost. Or you do a proportional share, you do something. So, that's what I'm looking at. Because I don't have anything to hook onto. I can't cross the road because the city of Staton has a district, so I can't take it to the west because it's in San Am Water District. So, I don't have any place to take it, other than unless I put that full line in. And that's an astronomical cost for one, 112 acre piece of property. I was just wondering, is, is anybody gonna be able to hook onto the storm line in the future? It's a valid question and it's a serious question. That will determine whether I buy this piece or not. And I wanted to know if somebody can answer me that. And I, I didn't know, I don't know where it's gonna go. We, I live here in Staton, so we annexed a piece of property up by Shaft Road and I think it's 50 lots or 52. I wasn't at those hearings 'cause I thought it was a great idea. I'm pro-development. So, I didn't go there, I don't know where their storm drains going. Does it go back to Fern Ridge, I mean Shaft Road, or is it going north? And if it goes north, are there gonna be enough fall where I could hook on to that line and pay a proportional share? I, I understand that. So, that, those are my questions.
Okay, there's a bunch of questions and most of them engineering questions, Jerry. Let's, can I?
Well, this is the, I'm not ready for, I'm not really ready, but I'm here asking these questions right now. I'll propose, just like you normally do, like I do every other subdivision. If this hearing wasn't scheduled today, if it was a couple of weeks down the road, then I would be in the.
Okay. In the, in the, in the time we've got tonight, would you, would you like maybe part of an answer to the pond question or the line or where can we start on this? Because.
I think pond's question, park question's all good.
Okay. Can I turn you over to our, our Public Works people that know these?
Oh, yeah. Yep. That'd be great.
Know the questions and maybe some of the answers.
That'd be great.
Go ahead, please.
Going back to what I was saying earlier, you've been in my office two or three times in the last week regarding another issue. This is the first time you bring it up. What I would recommend is you come by my office again and we can discuss whether or not we're gonna be able to do that. I have no idea where this 12 acre piece of property is. So, come by my office, show me the piece of property that you're looking at buying and we'll do our due diligence together like a normal process.
Okay. And my question is, that's question one. Question two is, where does the storm water go from that property that just got annexed in? They're in the same boat I'm in.
That would go north.
So it, now will that, will I be able to hook onto their line?
I have no idea where your, your property is, I just said that.
The Emery &amp; Sons property, where the Emery &amp; Sons is.
I don't know what that means. There's Bill Martinax property over there.
Nope, has nothing to do with Bill Martinax.
Well, you, I, please come by my office. You can point a map and show me which ma, which lot it is and I can tell you where that, that water's gonna go.
Okay.
Without any maps or drawings, I'm blind over here. I have no idea what property you're talking about.
Okay. On, on the, this is my second question. The property that just got annexed, where does their storm water go?
I just said it goes to the north.
Okay, how far, do you know?
To Mill Creek.
Okay, so it's gonna go straight to Mill Creek. So theoretically, okay.
I don't know where your property is located.
Well, that's fine.
All right.
You don't know where Emery &amp; Sons used to be?
I just said, I don't know where your property is located.
Okay, that's good.
Come by my office.
I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you. I'll be happy to help you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jerry. Anyone else tonight on this, this end of the meeting, comments from the public? Anyone else? All right, let's go to the consent agenda, please. And it is, it is for the council meeting on November 6th. You folks had a chance to review that and what would you like to do? Do we approve as well? As issued? As presented? Okay. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? And no discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
All right.
Okay. Pose same sign? All right, motion is passed. And next, we go to a public hearing. And I have to read this before we start. So bear with me for a few minutes here. Good evening, my name is Henry Porter and as mayor, I will be presiding over this hearing. This is a public hearing in the matter of land use file 7-08/17, concurrent applications for annexation, comprehensive plan amendments, and zoning map amendment by the city of Staton. The properties are located on Kendall Way. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that cover certain matters relevant to this case. That statement with all the information required to be presented under the Oregon Revised Statutes 197.763/5 is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also in the back counter is the agenda for the evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I hear none. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's public hearing is on a combination of applications from the city for annexation of approximately 27 acres of land, a comprehensive plan map amendment from residential to public, and a zone map amendment from medium density residential to public slash semi-public. In the winter of... Is that the right one? Nope, that's the wrong one. Hold on. In the winter of 2016-17, the city purchased two parcels of land on Kendall Way. A 13 acre parcel that had already been annexed was zoned medium density residential and I will refer to it, the rest of the hearing, as the Lambert property and it was purchased in December of 2016. A 26 acre parcel of land outside of the city limits and designated as residential by the comprehensive plan map was purchased in January of 2017 and will be referred to this evening as the Putney property. The Lambert property was purchased for use as a regional stormwater detention basin which will divert water from the Salem ditch to Mill Creek. The city's Public Works Department is currently designing the stormwater detention basin. Construction's anticipated sometime in the spring or summer of 2018. The Putney property was purchased for future development as a park. The city's adopted Parks Master Plan designates a future community park somewhere in the general area. The Public Works Department has recently issued a request for proposals from landscape architecture and engineering consultants to prepare a master plan for the future development of this property. Facilities that are likely to be included in the park include baseball, softball fields, soccer fields, perhaps skate park, basketball courts, picnic area, et cetera. But that is still to be determined through the master plan process for designing the The area that's cross-tatched here is the area that's proposed to be annexed. In addition to that, there's a, that was, this is the city-owned property proposed to be annexed. In addition to that, there's a proposal to annex an additional 1 and 3/4 approximately acre of land adjacent to the city-owned property. Included in your packet is consent from the owner of that property for its annexation and that is to serve as future dedication of a, of a future road. Trying to, I guess, I thought I had an aerial photo showing the two properties, but anyway. So, this generally shows the two properties in question outlined in blue and their current comprehensive plan designation of residential. In August, the city council adopted a resolution initiating the annexation process and these, and the comprehensive plan and zone map amendment. And as I said, in October, the owner of the adjacent property submitted authorization for that annexation and it has now been included in this process. The code requires that the city council make a determination that the six criteria that are in the code are met for any annexation application. Those criteria, five of those criteria are applied to this application as the six only applies to contract annexations. The five criteria are that need exists in the community for the land proposed to be annexed, the site is capable of being served by adequate public services, the annexation is contiguous to the city limits, the proposed annexation's compatible with the character of the surrounding area, complies with the urban growth program and policies of the city, and that the annexation complies or can be made to comply with all applicable provisions of state and local law. Three of those criteria are fairly objective and leave little for interpretation. In this case, sewer and water facilities are available to the property. There will be minimal demand on city utility services because of the nature of the proposed development being a park and a city street, the park and stormwater facility, and a stormwater facility. The area to be annexed is contiguous to the existing city limits on three sides and all of the provisions of state law regarding process and consent of owners have been or will be followed. So there's only really two criteria that are subjective and require your analysis and decision-making. The need for the property to be annexed and the compatibility with the surrounding area. As I mentioned in my introduction, the city's adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan identifies the need for an additional 40 acres of community parkland and the Putney property has been purchased to meet a portion of this need. Annexation of the property will allow its development as parkland under the city's standards. If we were to develop it before it was annexed, we would need to go through a planning and review process with Marion County Standards. And the city's transportation system plan shows the extension of Kendall Way as a future collector street, so annexation of the Kendall property will allow for its dedication and future development as a street in accordance with the master plan. The area is surrounded by a mix of single-family lots ranging in size from 8,000 to 27,000 square feet, duplexes on 13,000 square foot lots, multifamily developments, and the Staton Middle School campus. The proposal is to annex the property for municipal stormwater facility and park and should be compatible with those neighboring properties. Finally, the urban growth program policies of the city. The area is included in our urban growth boundary, is designated for future annexation and urbanized development and, and it's really our adopted master plans that constitute The comprehensive plan map amendment is from residential to public. This, the guiding principles in the comprehensive plan for the public is that because the future uses allowed in the, with the public designation and public zoning are fairly restrictive, they only allow public uses, city, school district, church, hospital, those types of uses. The policies in the plan are that the public designation should be applied after land is acquired by a public agency so that we're not targeting property in advance that could decrease its value. So now that the city has purchased this property, it is logical that the comprehensive plan designation be changed from residential to public and associated with that, the only zone that is called for, for the public designation is the public semi-public zone. The code requires that an application for comprehensive plan map and zone map amendment include information regarding the impacts of that, of the potential development from the comprehensive plan map and zone map amendment. The potential impacts on the city's transportation system be analyzed. The city's transportation master plan was written and adopted assuming that all of this area would be in residential development. And the planned improvements to the city's street system are assuming that there will be traffic impacts from residential development of this land. By turning it into the public zone with a... By turning it into the public zone with a proposed stormwater detention facility and a park, will be decreasing the amount of traffic that would be generated from this property compared to if it was in residential development. Because of that, staff did not include in the application a formal analysis from a traffic engineer, but because of some comments that we received today, staff will be... at the end of the hearing will be recommending that the council continue the hearing and not make a decision tonight, and will be back on December 4th to get the proper information into the record to support the decision that staff will eventually recommend that the comprehensive plan and zone map amendment be enacted. So that's what I've got for my staff report. I'll answer any questions you have, and then turn it over to the public for testimony.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Questions from the council?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah. So are you saying, Dan, that we just can't approve it?
I'm saying that based on the record that is developed tonight, without that analysis, there's a good chance that if you approved it, and if your approval was appealed, there's a good chance that the appeal would be successful and it would be back before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
So therefore, the recommendation is wait and have the record built properly.
Okay. Another question.
Can we move for a continuance?
Yeah, that will be the recommendation at the end of the hearing, after you get testimony from everybody.
We've got to play this out. Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Dan, where does Senate Bill 1573 apply to this, for the annexation component?
Senate Bill 1573 prohibits a municipality from sending an annexation request to the voters for approval. If the property is within the UGB, which this is, is contiguous to the city limits, which this is, has received consent from the owners for the annexation, which these parcels have, and meets all of the standards for annexation in the municipal code.
Thank you.
So therefore, the council... It is the council's decision, because the legislature has prohibited you from sending it to the voters.
Thank you.
That... That's still in the courts, isn't it, Dan?
That's my understa... There was a circuit court decision. I don't... I assume it's been appealed, because the cities who sued care strongly about this issue, but I haven't heard anything about this for eight, 10 months, probably.
Let me refer this, and I'm sorry I didn't introduce you when we started, Mr. Lane, our land use counsel, Lawley Lane. On that question, is that still up in the air, sort of?
It's my understanding that the litigation from Corvallis and Philomath is still working its way through the Court of Appeals. It's a slow process, especially on an issue like that.
Other questions from council?
It is.
Anyone? Okay. Let's go to proponents' testimony. Those in favor of this. Anyone want to speak at this time? How about opponents? Those having a dim view of this. General testimony. Does anyone... General thoughts on this? Questions from the public? Anyone? Ah. There is life out there. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Bill Martinak, and I reside at 1-555-6 Coon Hollow Road in Staton, and I currently own property west of the proposed development, which could possibly be affected by a couple of the systems, specifically the traffic and the stormwater system. Dan actually somewhat answered my main question tonight, which had to do with the lack of a transportation impact analysis, which I believe is required under a couple of sections of your ordinances, and it sounds like that's now going to be completed prior to finishing up with your work here. So that was... That was kind of one of my questions, and I sent some written documents to Dan to... that specifically state the various sections and talk about the need for that analysis to be done in the case of these two applications. And it also, you know, states that that analysis needs to take a look at not just what is... has been suggested will happen with this property, but that the worst-case scenario for the property, you're making a change to public property, and as Dan mentioned earlier, that property... There could be a school built on it, once it's public property, so the analysis has to be... would be done for that. The other question that I had as part of the application, and I believe this was for the annexation application, because there's not really any kind of a site plan that's being looked at, I believe there's a requirement for a conceptual plan, which I didn't see in the information that was provided for the hearing. I was not here for the hearings in front of the Planning Commission, but I assumed if there was a conceptual plan that it would have been submitted here, and maybe it has been, and I just didn't see it. But that's one of the boxes on the checklist for annexation, is either a plan for what is going to happen, or at least a concept of what will be moved ahead. And the last question had to do with whether or not the development here would follow the existing master plans for both stormwater and transportation, and the reason that I brought that up is because there is an existing stormwater master plan in place, and a portion of it's been followed. A portion of the master plan was constructed when Phillips Estates project was built, so that was just a question. Again, there was no... There's not... There's been discussion and talk about what's going to be done to serve both this planned annexation and the approved subdivision that's south of this property, but have not really seen a concept or a plan of exactly what that's going to look like. So those were my questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Oh, let's see. Any other... Any other questions from the public? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dan Morgan, and I reside at 2195 Cardinal Avenue here in Staton, and my question has possibly been answered, yet I want to draw it to the attention of the council in case something like this would happen. Beyond the second little road that goes to the west, there about halfway up in the proposed city parks, is a large hayfield there that I believe runs clear out to Golf Club Road, and my question is, if a developer ever come in and wanted to buy that land and develop that, if all of that traffic from those housing develop... that housing development would also be funneled down Kendall Way, will that be addressed at the time the traffic study would be studied for just this portion that is now being suggested, or would that also include that... I don't know how many acres that is, but it's a pretty good-sized hayfield between that property line and the golf course. They could put in probably, I would guess, 100 houses or so in there. If that would be the case, will Kendall Way be able to handle all that traffic, and would that be looked at at this time, or would that be a total separate subject, and then you'd have to tear Kendall Way up again and widen it, or take some other alternate route to get rid of that traffic? Because I know Kendall Way, with the ballfields, sports fields, that's going to create a lot of traffic in there just for those, and I'm sure that the study will prove that Kendall Way can probably handle that, because I understand that Kendall Way is going to be remodeled all the way from Shaft Road all the way up. But I just wanted to bring up the question of, if those hayfields were ever annexed into the city, what would that do, and will that be studied at this traffic study?
Would... Dan, would you or Lance care to address any of Mr. Morgan's statements and concerns
I'll try to answer all the questions that have been raised so far.
In the public hearing here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, a conceptual... I think I already answered the issue about traffic that Mr. Martinak raised, and that's why we're suggesting that tonight you continue the hearing for two weeks. There is... There was not a conceptual plan for the development of the park included with the application. There is a plan in the files that actually was developed about 10 or 12 years ago, when the city was first interested in this property, that could be included in the record, but the city, as I said in my introductory remarks, the city is going through the RFP process right now to hire consultants to figure out what will happen there. The city's development plan is to turn it into a park, and whether it will be three baseball fields and two soccer fields, or two soccer... or three soccer fields and two baseball fields and other facilities, who knows? We don't... We just don't know yet. It is... I will include the conceptual plan from 2007 or '08 into the record, so that it is there as part of the application. The third... The third question... I forget what the third question was.
Hey.
Oh. Hey. Well, Kendall Way is designated in the city's transportation master plan as a future collector street. When the Lambert property was partitioned, adequate right-of-way was dedicated to the public to create an 80-foot right-of-way, and that will be done also as the park is developed, for the future extension of Kendall Way to the north, and the transportation master plan has a number of future collector streets east-west connecting Kendall Way and Golf Club Road that will be developed as property is developed in that northwest area. So for instance, when the Phillips Estates subdivision was plotted, Junko Street was plotted at half width of a... and is designated as a future neighborhood collector, so it will have a slightly higher capacity than a typical residential street, and when the Kendall property to the north is developed, the rest of that street will be built. The transportation master plan shows another east-west collector street to the north that will provide that type of street network as the city develops to the north and west.
Well, thank you. That pretty well answers my question, then. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other questions from the public? Okay. Let's go on to questions from council. Anything at this point? Then a staff summary. Dan? Mr. Fleishman?
So, in summary, the applications you have before you are to annex about 27 acres of land, 26 of which is owned by the city, an acre and a half or three-quarters or so is owned by Mr. Kendall, to change the comprehensive plan designation of the city-owned property that is proposed for annexation, as well as the city-owned property to the south that was per... that is already in the city, and to assign, quote, "the proper zoning" once the comprehensive plan map is amended. Because of the lack of information included in the original paperwork, the recommendation is that you continue the hearing tonight, and we'll be back to finish this up on December 4th.
Okay.
So the proper motion would be just to continue the hearing until December 4th.
All right. Well, let's... So we... I guess we have to... We should close the hearing, or no, just leave it open?
No. You want to leave the...
Leave it open.
Leave the hearing going and...
And move for a continuance.
And continue the hearing until December 4th.
Mr. Mayor, I move for a continuance. All right. I've got a motion for a continuance of this hearing. Is there a second?
I second it.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Under discussion... That's going to be a busy evening.
True.
Oh, we'll have...
You're right.
We'll have something like 3,000 hours of Facebook testimony to deal with. Well, not 3,000, about 2,500, which is still plenty, and this... Okay. A continuance. All right. On the continuance, Ms. Angelo, would you poll the council on this one, please?
Of course. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Motion passed, 4 to 0.
4 to 0, and we will continue this in a couple of weeks. And thank you all that took part in this, and I hope you'll come back and we'll watch this play out. There's no unfinished business, new business, a proposed resolution establishing a residential rental registration fee. Mr. Fleishman? Dan? Dan? Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you. Sorry about the delay there. I was being whispered to. So, about a year ago, the city council enacted Ordinance 1000, which established the Staton Residential Rental Housing Code. As part of that code, it authorizes the city council to, by resolution, impose an annual fee on each residential rental unit. At the time the code that the ordinance was adopted, the council chose to not impose a fee and to not collect any funds to administer and enforce the code. When the council went through your goal-setting sessions back in the spring and late winter, one of your adopted goals was called for exploration of a licensing program for rental properties. So in order to carry out the adopted goals, staff has drafted Resolution... Where's the number?
Ordinance 1000?
Here it is. Resolution 969, which would establish a $10 per unit per year fee, require that each owner of a residential rental unit complete a registration form, and establishes a penalty for failure to pay the annual fee of $75 per unit. The city has increased the staff for enforcement of city codes, and if every unit in the city paid the $10 per unit per year fee, we estimate that the total amount of revenue to the city would be about $12,000 per year, and would allow the city to have a more complete rental housing program that perhaps, if the council chose, would include periodic inspections of rental units to assure they meet the standards you've adopted. But whether to go forward with this is really up to you and what you had in mind when you adopted the goal of exploring a licensing program for rental units. And we're open to any... And we're open to any suggestions or that you have, but this is what we came up with in response to your goal.
Thank you, Dan. Who wants to, who wants to take this on? Who wants to start? Priscilla, go ahead.
I have a question.
Jump in.
How do you know who's renting their property and who isn't renting their property?
As a, as a first cut of the, we would look at the Marion County assessor's records, and if the mailing address is different than the property address, then that's an indication that the unit is likely to be rented, with, of course, the exception of people who are in an owner-occupied house and have a P.O. box.
So, there's really no way for us to tell technically? You just said if you have a P.O. box, you don't know that someone's renting it.
Right.
And you would have to constantly be on top of that to check who is doing what in order to, I mean, it's not like you can look at the Marion County records at once. You'd have to look at them as each thing got put onto it as to what's a rental and what's not. One of the reasons I ask is I, I own an Airbnb, and in talking to other people who have Airbnbs, I found out that most of them don't even pay the fees that I'm paying because there is no way for you guys to even know who's doing it. You know what I mean? I just, and I don't have a problem at all with that, except I have a problem enacting rules or fees that we have no way of, of fairly enforcing. If we can't fairly enforce it or look at it, then why are we even doing it, I guess, is my point. Or if to enforce it costs us twice, twice as much as the money that we're going to collect on it, that also doesn't seem like a very good use of city resources. And twelve thousand dollars a year, that's if every single person paid them, is not very much when it comes to staff time as to try and keep up on, number one, who is actually renting property, who isn't renting property, and what are you going to do if they don't pay it? Go out and arrest them? I mean, I, I guess I just, yeah, I guess I just don't see any way to enforce it very easily.
I think we could go after those that flagrantly ignore these things and announce proudly that they don't pay the fee. And we could, we could do things, especially prominent citizens that, that are doing this stuff. Everyone knows how this came about, right? We all familiar with the situation? We were, I'm not going to call it blindsided because probably everyone else knew this, but I was really surprised to find out that over forty percent of our housing was rental. This is a year, year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. Probably known to everyone else, but I didn't think it was that high. Saw apartment buildings, knew that. Then we were confronted, once, once that hit us, then we were confronted with people coming to city council meetings and telling us these horror stories about the apartment complex they lived in that was entirely, it was almost unlivable with sewage running, open sewers, windows broken, light fixtures, not the lights, but the fixtures burned out. Just a terrible mess. We, we came this close to, what did we do? We were going to condemn the thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. We literally were going to condemn this apartment complex. And instead of that, I don't know if, I don't know that we forced the owner. We suggested very strongly to the owner that he either fix it or sell it, and he sold it, and a new owner came in and rebuilt the whole complex. And I hope to everyone that lived there satisfaction. But that's where this, that's where this came from. How much more of this kind of stuff is going on in our community? At the same time, we've got, we had, oh, three or four at one meeting, had these wonderfully responsible landlords come in and tell us what a wonderful job they were doing with their rentals. And we sat and listened to that, and I don't know that there was any open disagreement. They were just statements that these folks were making. Well, the interesting part of it to me was that none of them lived here. They lived in Salem, they lived in CIO, they lived in Sublimity. Incredibly responsible people, but just not here. So, that's where some of this came from. And if we're devoting resources to identifying substandard housing, and we've got standards for it, the lights should work, the water should run, the toilets should flush. Little things like that. The windows should close. The heat should stay on if it needs it. Is that asking too much? I mean, just kind of a, a simple humanity as far as, as housing folks. So, I think that's where this is coming from. And if we can make it work, we can, we can, we could find a few high-profile renters, and if they, if they flaunt this, make examples of them, we could
I don't see what, what you just said has to do with this.
Well, it's, it's exactly, it's all of it.
Having a ten-dollar fee for rental has nothing to do with having having substandard rental thing.
It's a counter to your, why do anything because we can't enforce it? I think we can.
No, I, I agree with enforcing certain standards. I'm talking about enforcing a ten-dollar fee on the ninety-five percent of people who are, are good landlords for the five percent of people who are not. It seems like we could do a better, better job of that.
Well, if, if we're using staff resources, we should, we're going to have to fund them out of something else if we don't do it this way. Dan, Mr. Fleishman, we are actively fun, using staff resources to follow up on complaints, at least at this point, right?
Correct. I had a conversation last week with the enforcement officer about a rental he had inspected, and he came in to get guidance on how the code sets out the enforcement procedure. So, yes, we are getting complaints and we are responding to them.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all, that's all I've got on this, but anyone else?
Yeah, is this a solution in search of a problem if we're already dealing with it? Our average police officer salary in the city is roughly sixty-four thousand dollars. I'm not sure exactly, you know, forty-four point six percent of our housing units in state are rentals, six percent of them are empties. It's ten dollars, it's twelve thousand dollars. Is that going to make a difference? Or is that going to be a starting point for hiring another employee to work on this? And then instead of collecting twelve thousand dollars, we're going to be paying sixty thousand dollars plus, plus over here, plus burden for another employee to go out and look at rental units and make sure they're up to snuff? You know, is that where this is eventually going?
As a result of the council's discussions during the goal-setting for the, for this year, the city already increased the enforcement staff. We went from half-time
To FTE.
To two-half-time, to one-for-time equivalent. And, and you adopted the goal of exploring a licensing program. So, this is the initial, this is the beginning of that discussion and that exploration for how you want to carry out and achieve what you set out as a goal for exploring a licensing program.
Why don't we just make it fifty bucks and cover the cost of the FTE? Because your average studio in this town, according to Zillow, is renting for four hundred and fifty-three dollars, up to two to three thousand dollars for a house. If we're going to burden them with ten dollars, we might as well burden them with fifty dollars, which is a fraction of a month's rent, you know, it's not going to be that big a deal. But I do agree with Priscilla's point is how we're going to enforce, make sure that people are paying besides looking at their meter bills and then seeing if their meter bills go to the residents, you know. Seems to get into a quagmire, and if we're going to do it, we might as well do it right and raise the money to pay the enforcement officer and do the job right. Ten dollars seems silly.
So, are there any kind of allowances here if somebody has a, an apartment complex that has fifty rentals in it? Do they now have to pay five hundred dollars?
If the council adopts the resolution as staff drafted it, the answer to your question is yes, unless they are a property that is exempt as already laid out in the code.
The only large unit housing is the Elder Housing Era, right? There are no apartments with more than twenty units, are there?
There's the Wolf Ridge, but that's, that's an exempt.
It's affordable housing.
Right, that, that's an exempt, so yes, there are
How many are in the Jones Motel?
I think that's about twenty, give or take one or two.
What else do you folks want to do with this? I've made my impatient plea. Councilors have offered thoughts on this.
I, I, I don't have a, and so I guess I want to back up a little bit because I don't want, I don't want you to think that I have a problem with there being a fee attached to rental property in order to enforce rentals being good. Where, where my problem lies is in, there doesn't seem to be a good system in place for knowing who has rentals, where, I mean, that's, that's where, where my problem is. It isn't with the fee, or it isn't with the, the fact that I, that I, that I see the need for us to make sure that, that rental housing is up to a certain standard. I, I don't have a problem with that. I have a problem with how, how do we fairly make sure that we are collecting what we're supposed to be collecting fairly and equitably across the board? And I don't know, again, that I think that it's equitable if someone is renting out very small places for very little money, and they have twenty of them, that they would pay two hundred, and a guy that's renting out a piece of property and getting three thousand dollars a month for it pays the same ten dollars. I, I, I guess I just don't see us as, as being very equitable in how we're doing things, and I would like to see something a little more equitable.
So, possibly back to the drawing boards, what, where, where do you folks want to be on this? I'm, I don't get to vote, so.
I mean, maybe something based on, on value or based on what the, what they get? Again, if somebody's renting out a piece of property for four thousand dollars a month, then I'd rather see, I would rather not see them pay the same ten dollars as somebody that's, that has a nice little piece of property and is renting it to someone for four hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Quite honestly, it's going to cost us more than ten dollars to collect the fee. In staff time, isn't it?
And again, I don't mind the fee being more, but I think it needs to be equitable.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let me, let me weigh in on this for a minute. This proposed fee is a component of the ordinance that we passed back in, whenever it was, a couple of months ago.
Last November.
Last November, a year ago. And your recollection about how we got to that point is accurate because several of us went to that property and looked at it. I did it with LT, and several other, other councilors did it as well. And the conditions you describe, Mayor, are being, you're being favorable because I walked into one of the apartments where the sewage from the apartment above was leaking directly onto the person in the toilet below. So, how we rectified that was the enforcement piece because we cited that property owner numerous times, went to court numerous times with him until he finally got the message. So, is this ten-dollar fee going to cover all costs? No, it's going to supplement in part, in totality, what the guys are doing to enforce this ordinance that we have in the books now, yes. My two concerns are this, it's going to raise the rate of rentals in state, and there's no two ways about it. And my other piece, the concern that was expressed by the landowners when they came last time is what is the qualification of the inspector for building codes? And what I mean by that is we have our code enforcement officers going in there, as any of us could, and seeing visual things. But does that necessarily mean that that's a violation of the code? And if so, what, what kind of training are we going to give them to, to recognize that? So, those are my two concerns. But I think the, the way our hand was forced on that, the community came to us asking for help, and they came to us numerous times saying, "Please do something for us," and that's how this originated. So, that's where we're at.
Exactly. Dan, what would it take to hire a qual, let's say, whatever the qualifications are, the qualified building inspector? On an as-needed, well, just to hire one, what, what would that take? It's probably astronomical, but I'm ready. Go ahead.
We have the services of Marion County Building Inspection available to us when we believe there are violations of the structural code or the life safety codes or the electrical code or the plumbing code. And in the case that has been talked about this evening, we had Marion County Building Inspection out, we had the state fire marshal's office out, et cetera. Most of the violations of the city's residential rental code that we're going to see are not violations that I believe someone needs to be certified or licensed or whatever as a building inspector. They're not about the size of the floor joists or the number of nails in the plywood. They are about the general living conditions as you described. Is the window busted out? Is there a lock on the door, et cetera? I believe that our current staff assigned to enforce this code is qualified to go into a unit and determine whether it's livable or not. Really, that's what we're talking about here. Not, did the sink get attached to the wall? And is there a P-trap instead of an S-trap?
Sure.
Whatever. It's, is there a, is there a sink?
Fair enough, and I think what we saw back in the, for the example we were referring to, that was, that was pretty extreme. I mean, I'm glad we had a reference in the Marion County Building Inspector. Just wanted to make sure we clarified. That's fine. I'm fine with that.
And Dan, that Ordinance 1000 from a year ago, that lays out those basic, basic livability, right?
Yes, and, and you have that in your packet as part of
That's right.
Part of your packet is, is Chapter 1506. And, and those standards are, you know, "Each dwelling unit shall be provided with access to a toilet, bath or shower, and lavatory in a room or rooms separate from the habitable rooms which affords privacy within the building in which the dwelling is located." I mean, that's the type of standard we're talking about enforcing. "You shall have a bathroom that works." Not, you know, is the, is the toilet properly installed?
I, I have to give maybe a little bit of preference here with what, with the fact that I may be slightly biased. As a social worker in Lane County for forty-some years, Eugene passed a rental standards. When they did, I had an entire group of people that had been able to rent places because these people did not have good rental histories, and these people tended to pretty much ruin anywhere that they lived. ruin anywhere that they lived, that no longer had anywhere to live. Because the rental standards were such that now those landlords wouldn't rent to them anymore because they had to, I mean, I, I understand where people get offended by the way that some people live. But, but, and, and I, and I also understand that we need to be safe. But when you get to putting standards, a certain level of standard on things that maybe aren't your standards, and maybe take away some kind of substandard housing that's available to some people, I'm not sure that I agree with that. And I, I know you probably didn't understand anything I just said. But it was something that, that occurred, and as soon as Eugene did that rental thing, it just, it really knocked some people out of the park that, that had been able to at least have a roof over their heads and get out of the rain sometimes. And now all of a sudden couldn't even do that because landlords would no longer rent to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Back to Priscilla's question about identifying the landowner. Can't we just look at the assessors' ownership and see if there's any abnormalities as far as change in the ownership from the previous years and?
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have a system set up because there has not been the need for a system to identify landlords. I think once, if the council chooses to enact this resolution either as drafted or as amended, and whether you do it tonight or in, in a couple of weeks or months from now, once there is the requirement between the Finance Department staff and looking at the assessor's records, you know, as I said before, at, at least at first blush, if you've got a property address here in Statean and an owner's mailing address in Sublimity, chances are good that it's going to be a rental. And there will be some people who have a PO box, or for whatever reason, live one place and have a mailing address in another place, and we'll send them a form and they'll write back saying, this is not a rental, I live here. And they'll get dropped off the list for the next year. And otherwise, yes, it'll be a matter of looking at, at annually, looking at the properties that have sold and seeing which ones get a, get a notice. And, and eventually that system will be worked out.
Okay. What do you folks want to do with it? We can continue this, we can?
I have one more question. Dan, before we did this, did we look at other places that have these? And look at, at how they do it and how it's equitable there and how they enforce it? And what their rate of return is on them? I mean, there's a lot of places that have this kind of rental thing.
Right, I, I did some research, you know, back a year ago when we were presenting Ordinance 1000 to the council and having those discussions. I did some research as to other cities in Oregon that have a fee. I did not go beyond that to find out their mechanisms for administering the fee and their, their, what's the right word, their collection rate. There were a couple of cities who had fees, $10, $13. There was one city that I recall looking at that had a, that had a graduated rate so that if you, if you did own 50 units, you paid less per unit than if you only owned two units. So, you know, those options are available as modifications to the proposed resolution. Or, yeah, if you wanted to, as, as you said, if you wanted to do it based, you know, so that somebody who was getting $2,000 a month per unit paid more than someone who was only getting $300 a month per unit. But I see that as a real administrative nightmare, even worse than figuring out where's, where are the rental units?
I'm looking at fees around the state of Oregon. The lowest one I found is Medford at $40 plus $1. The highest one I've found so far is Bend at $275.
Where's that?
Bend. Could you do it based on the, the worth of the property versus based on what they were getting in rent?
That, that would be a.
Which would not, doesn't seem.
That would be a, that would be a. That would be information that's publicly available, easily collected, and, and not involve prying into, well, gee, what, tell us what you're getting for rent.
Right, yeah, so, yeah. So that would be an easier way to do that, yeah.
So we've taken care of the concern about Big Brother prying into people's lives here. Good, we can go on from there. Where, what else do you want to do with this tonight? We can, we can defer consideration of it, we can modify it, we can knock it in the head, or we can do the right thing. I'll leave it up to everyone here to figure out what the right thing is.
Again, I'd like to see something.
We know in our hearts what it is.
That's more equitable.
All right?
Yeah, I, I'd like to see them bring back something that's more equitable for property. Both the graduated fee for if you own more units and the fee based on the value of the property versus across the board.
The flat fee thing?
It's a no-flat fee then.
Yeah.
So, could I get some direction from council as to what should we do with it? Bring it back? Sit on it?
Everybody's fees are so much higher.
Courage, good people, courage!
Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with councillor's viable suggestions, bring it up for some other considerations.
Okay. So, what, a month, a couple of months? First, after the first of the year?
Let's not do it at the December 4th meeting.
We'll pass on the December 4th meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can look at just doing some research and bring it back.
We can, we can come back for, for another discussion with a couple of different options to choose from and then incorporate those into the resolution for subsequent meetings.
That sounds good.
For adoption.
Thank you, Dan, thanks, folks. Okay, let's go to staff commission reports. The Finance Department, Cindy and Elizabeth, what did they have, do they have for us tonight? Okay, all right. Looking good? Number of bills mailed, 2397 in October, 2414 in September. Keith, let me ask, we, we obviously track those. The trend has to be upward. Right, every time you add a housing unit, it adds one, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
But there can be different things for people moving, or.
Yeah.
Or houses in, in transition.
Okay. One service still discontinued. Lieutenant B., what's, what's going on in the, other than adopting children as future policemen? What else are you guys doing?
That's kind of the highlight. I don't think I can top that. So for the month of November, if you notice that some of our officers are a little bit hairy, that's because we suspended our grooming standards for this month to participate in No Shave November. And for officers to be able to participate in that, they have to make a donation to a, to a child's hospital, so either Dornbecker or St. Jude's. So, put up with them for a month, they'll have to shave as usual December 1. Also, in this, the month of November, we participated. I don't participate because I don't, but I'll pay the fee, but I don't grow right, so. In the month of November, we also participated with the Methodist Church for the spaghetti feed. Raised about $1,300 for our canine fund to support our narcotics canine, Brody. And November 6, McDonald's hosted Coffee with a Cop. A few of our officers went and had coffee with members of the public and it was a good event. Other than that, the October staff report is in front of you and I have nothing to add.
Lieutenant, are we seeing a lot more, noticing a lot more, or as many or not as many distracted, since these new distracted driver laws went into effect? We seeing more of that locally?
It's been about the same since the law's taken effect.
Okay.
It's one of those odd situations where everybody complains about it, but still does it.
Okay, but we do have people driving along and?
Yeah.
Okay. All of us see them, do you guys see them?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay.
So I did want to say that I'm, I have some friends who are part of the old timers McDonald's group that has coffee there every morning, and I just got to tell you, you guys have just made their day.
They made our day too.
They, they were talking about it before you guys ever got there. I, I was told, do you know what tomorrow is? What, what, that, tomorrow's the, the cop day. The, the police are going to be at the McDonald's.
The, the really neat thing about Coffee with a Cop is we don't go in with any speeches, any agendas, we just sit and talk to people. And usually, we end up listening more than we're talking. So it's just a way to connect with the people of the public and we enjoy it as much as they do.
Mr. Ludwig, tell us about Public Works Operating Report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have the October Monthly Operating Report. I really don't have anything to add to that. Looks like we've generated $43,000 with SDCs with new single-family home dwelling construction within the last month. And I think that puts us at 22 houses we've got going right now. So it's a, a nice, a nice chunk of development going on here in the city of Statean. We've also spent some time out at Riverfront Park cleaning that of blackberries and trees. And I'm not sure if any of you have been out there, but it looks a heck of a lot better. And so we're going to be putting some effort into that in the next year, trying to get that up to standards as far as we're concerned, needs to be done. That's all I have, any questions?
Thank you. Dan, planning and development.
You've got my written report, I don't really have anything to add to it, but I'll answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions for Dan? Okay. All right. Jan, the library, what's, what's going on over there?
Mayor and council, you have my report before you. I would like to invite you to, the December 7th, you bring your sweater and we'll provide the ugly for your ugly holiday sweater, that should be very fun.
Is there any beer, beer brand books, can you buy?
It is, the 27th of January.
I'm afraid to ask what the ugly is.
All kinds of things, I have, we have bells and all kinds of things.
All right, are there any comments or presentations, anyone want to say anything? Comments from the public, another, another chance. For those shy ones, there's one, okay.
Hi, I'm Paige Hook and I live at 2088 Quail Run Avenue. And I just wanted to make a comment on the rental fee discussion. I, I really feel like anything that we can do to help people in our city is worth it. I do share some concerns that Councilwoman Glidewell had about equity, because that's always important, we don't want the rental, the renters to have to foot the cost. So I would ask that maybe you guys consider a percentage so that every time that a rent, landlord raises the rent, their fee also increases. So that no matter how high they raise their rent to try to cover the costs, they're still having to pay more at that point. And then I also had kind of a, a question about, could you guys pull your water database of who's paying city water and, and compare that to the owner versus who's actually paying it? Because if you're looking at your houses, then usually landlords don't pay for the water for their renters. If you're looking at apartments, that's different. But anyway, I think it's great to have someone be able to come in to, to some of these homes that gives, that lets us advocate for people that just, they, they can't advocate for themselves. You know, I mean, they're, they're trying to get their landlord to listen and they're not. So I, I think there's only good out of this and I'm really glad that you guys are going to consider this a little bit longer. And, and getting an ordinance person in there also can alert the police department if there are any, like, welfare checks needed. So it's just, it's all good stuff. So that's just what I had to say and thank you for, for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. A bunch of shy people tonight. Business from the City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time we met, we discussed that we had an election the following day for our charter review. I wanted to take a moment to thank Nancy Boyer with the Midland Valley Cog who helped facilitate that program, and the members of, of that group who, who worked hard and I think did a great job of coming together with some nice recommendations. And to thank the citizens who, who have voted so overwhelmingly to support that. So we'll look for that to become final as, as the election commission certifies the results and just wanted to acknowledge and thank the community for that. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything, other than, as slow as I am, I'm working toward a, an appointment of that, the empty seat on the council. And we'll try to have that for the 4th of December, which, which looks like it's going to be a barn burner of a meeting, so.
So Hank, are you saying that someone will be appointed by the 4th or not?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, I am valiantly working on it. And it just is, it seems slow, it seems slow to me, but it, it's working its way through the process. Business from the council, anything? Future agenda items, public hearings, sunshine coffee, city attorney award of contract, board and committee appointments. And I'll be working with our worthy city recorder to find out how many budget committee people I need to appoint and so on and so forth. We'll, we'll try to do that. That should be a great meeting, save, save that one. Or, might be a good time to be sick and stay home, but anyway. So if there's anything else, here's your chance, we're done, thank you.